Good evening. Today is Thursday, October 26, 2023, and the time is 6:30 PM. I will now call the regular meeting of the ISD 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to those of you who are in the audience this evening and to anyone who may be watching online. Director Chester, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt.
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Connor. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. First, we will receive a report about the financial audit from Tyler Dean, Director of Finance, and Aaron Dahl, CPA Audit Manager from Birken KDV. Welcome to you both.
Good evening, Chair Hume, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Belmont, members of the board. In a moment, I'll hand it over to Aaron Dahl, Audit Manager with Birken KDV, who will walk you through the 2223 audit results. I want to thank the Finance Team and the Birken KDV Team. We had a great experience with Aaron's team. We also had great audit results, so I will let Aaron walk you through those details.
Sounds good. Thank you, Tyler, and thank you, board, for the opportunity to serve as your auditors this year. We'll start with the components of the audit. So we issue an opinion on the district's basic financial statements. We also issue a report on the results of an audit performed in accordance with government auditing standards, a report on results of a single audit performed in accordance with the OMB Uniform Guidance, and a report on the results of testing on Minnesota legal compliance. And then also, you'll have in front of you the communications letter, which includes financial analysis, findings, and management recommendations. Starting with the results of the audit, so the financial statements are management's responsibility, and we, as auditors, are responsible to express an opinion on them. The audit does include examining on a test basis evidence supporting amounts and disclosures in the financial statements. We did issue an unmodified opinion on the district's basic financial statements, so that's the best opinion we can give as auditors, so a nice clean opinion there. That does comprise the district's governmental activities, each major fund, the aggregate remaining funds, and the budget to actual statements for the general fund, food service fund, and the community service fund. In relation to our report on government auditing standards, we had no findings there as well, so a nice clean report there on the gas side of things as well. The report on compliance in accordance with OMB Uniform Guidance, so that's the report we issue in relation to the federal programs, so when a district has over 750,000 in federal expenditures or required to perform single audit. We did examine three programs this year, so we looked at the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, the education stabilization funds, and then Title I as well, and happy to report no findings within those federal programs as well. And then lastly, the report on Minnesota legal compliance, no findings there as well, so that's where we look at things like conflicts of interest, bids, collateral, things of those natures, so nothing to report there as well. So, all around, nice clean report, so a great job by Tyler and the finance team to have those nice clean opinions on the audit reports this year. Next, I'll just kind of walk through some of the trends and analysis within that communication letter, and starting here with the formula allowance for the past year. So, the largest single funding source for school districts is this basic general education aid. Each year, the legislature sets the basic formula allowance, which is presented here. The total basic general education revenue is calculated by multiplying the formula allowance by the number of pupil units for which a district is entitled to aid. So, for fiscal year '23, you can see there was that 2% increase, there was a 2.5% increase for '22, and it actually jumps up to 4% for fiscal year '24. So, you'll see a nice jump in general education aids next year as well. All right, next, we have the average daily membership, or kind of the student count for the past five years, presented here. As you can see, the resident ADM has steadily decreased from the year ended June 30, 2019 to 2023. Over that five-year period, resident ADM has decreased by about 378 or 3.6%. Just looking at 2023, in the one-year basis, the total resident ADM decreased by just four for that year, which is a decline of less than 1%. So, things started to steady off for fiscal year '23. To calculate a majority of the district's education aids, the ADM amounts are converted into pupil units by weighting based on the student's grade level. So here we have the resident ADM again, as you can kind of see, bit of a downward trend within each of the secondary, elementary, and kindergarten groups. And here we have the pupil unit weighting, so you can see kind of the one factor for most grade levels with a 1.2 factor for the secondary group. Taking a look at the adjusted pupil unit numbers, over the five-year period, they were down about 1,033 or 10.9%, so kind of similar to those resident numbers that we saw there. But on that one-year trend, it was down just four again, so less than 1%. So, similar trend with the resident and then the weighted pupil unit numbers as well. And here we just have, kind of in graphical form, some of the same data, so as you can see, it was at a high point in 2019, dropped a little bit, which was pretty common kind of during those COVID period, and then has held steady here for 2023. Next, we'll take a look at the general fund sources of revenue. So we have the previous five years presented here. Revenues have increased in each of the five years presented. It increased by about 6.2 million or 4.6% compared to the prior year. In 2023, the state sources made up about 64.6% of general fund revenues, the local property taxes made up 20.9%, and then the other sources made up 14.5%. And that other category does include federal aids, investment earnings, and other local revenues. The local property tax revenue did decrease by about 1.2 million, based on a decrease in the levy allocation for the fund. Revenue from state sources increased by about 4.9 million, with an increase in aids for special education and general education. And then the other revenue category did increase by about 2.5 million, with improved market conditions and investment earnings, along with some greater medical assistance revenue. As I mentioned, this also does contain the federal money, which has fluctuated over the past five years, due in large part to the COVID pandemic-related funding. So, taking a look at just the federal pieces, back in 2021, it was at 9 million, it went up to 15 million for 2022, and then around 14.8 million for fiscal year '23. Here we have it in graphical form, just kind of taking a look at the different pieces as well. So, you can see, kind of the biggest fluctuation is with that top line in the other category. Next, we'll take a look at the budget and actual results for the general fund. So for the fiscal year ending '23, the board did adopt the final budget calling for nearly 137.8 million in both revenues and expenditures, so pretty close to a balanced budget. The actual revenues and other financing sources did exceed expenditures by about 5 million for the year, so you can see that with the bottom right number there. The actual revenues of about 142 million were about 4.5 million over, or 3.3% over the final budget. The revenue from the state sources was over budget by about 2.8 million, with some conservative budgeting for special education and general education aids. The other local and county revenues were over budget by about 2.4 million, with improved market conditions and medical assistance revenue coming in higher than anticipated. And then federal revenues were actually under budget by about 967,000, with a budgeted project using federal funding being delayed until after fiscal year end. On the expenditure side, that was pretty much spot-on. The expenditures of 137 million were about 454,000 or .3% under budget. The biggest variance there was with capital outlay, which was 743,000 under budget due to some delay in projects. And as I mentioned, the other expenditure categories were relatively in line with the budgeted amounts. Next, we have a comparison for the past two years, just taking a look at expenditures by programs. Pretty similar numbers percentage-wise for each of the programs. Overall expenditures in the general fund increased by about 3.8 million or 2.9% compared to the prior year. Significant portion of that increase related to expenditures for the sites and buildings category and long-term facility maintenance. The three instruction categories, the regular vocational and special education, comprise 62.5% of total expenditures in 2023, and that's compared to 63.4% in fiscal year 2022. So, good to see a majority of the expenditure still going to those instruction categories. Next, we have a few charts, just taking a look at revenues and expenditures per student based on the ADM numbers and then the numbers coming in. So, as you can see, compared to the state averages, the district is higher in the general fund and the community service fund compared to the state. It's similar in food service and debt service. And then the debt service and the building construction fund obviously can fluctuate yearly based on the number of projects going on and if there's any debt issuances throughout the year. Here we just have it in graphical form, so you can see the state average in blue while the district's in green there, so kind of growing at a similar pace, both the district and the state averages with those upward trends over the five-year period. Similarly, for the expenditures per student, so again, similar to revenues, the general fund and the community service fund were higher, although on the expenditure side, the community service fund is closer to the state average, so that kind of signifies that the revenues for the community service fund are doing well compared to other districts around the state. And again, similar in food service and debt service, and significantly lower in the building construction funds, kind of based on the projects. Again, here, kind of in the graphical form, just kind of similar trends there, with the district outpacing the state average on the expenditure side as well. Next, we have the financial position, or the total fund balance for the general fund, along with the cash and investments for each of the past five years. Changes in the timing of payments from the state and timing of requests for reimbursement of federal funds do play a role in the gap between fund balance and cash and investment, so that's definitely something that can fluctuate each year. Fund balance has increased by about 22 million or 145% over the past five years, so you can see a little over 15 million back in 2019, up to over 37 million for 2023. Next, we have the general fund operations. So, taking a look mainly at the fund balance here, that represents 27.3% of annual expenditures based on the 2023 spending levels, while the unassigned fund balance represents 16.4% of expenditures. The district's fund balance policy does call for a minimum of 8%, so with that 16.4%, well above the minimum called for. The unassigned portion did increase by about 5 million in fund balance for 2023, which primarily went to that unassigned portion of fund balance. Lastly, we'll take a look at the special revenue fund, so starting with the food service fund. The revenues did decrease by about 425,000 for the year, as there was less federal funding for meal reimbursements on the federal side of things. The expenditures did increase by about 305,000 in 2023, with the result of higher costs for goods and supplies. But again, for the fourth straight year, as you can kind of see in that middle line, there were positive operations with a surplus of around 661,000 for the current year. Next, we have the community service fund, again with the five years presented. Revenues for this fund did exceed expenditures by about 889,000 for the year. Again, the fourth straight year of seeing a surplus on the community service fund side of things, which is quite commendable through the pandemic. A lot of districts were hit pretty hard by COVID and the effects on programming, so good to see that, the positive operations for the past four years. For fiscal year '23, revenues increased by about 6.3% with additional state and federal funding during the year, while expenditures increased by 12.1%. Expenditures did increase with more activity in programming, again, kind of rebounding from COVID and just an increase in programming overall. The excess of around 890,000 during 2023 did create a positive fund balance, over 4 million at the end of the fiscal year, so that bottom line there does continue to grow as well for the community service fund.
With that, I'll open it up to any questions or comments the board might have.
Thank you very much. Board members, comments and questions? Director Miller.
First of all, thank you and welcome. I'm happy to see the overall top-end results, happy in a couple of reasons. One, obviously, the obvious being that there was no findings, no significant findings. I assume that there's no minor findings or whatever either, right?
Yeah, no written finding, which is kind of rare for districts, so very commendable.
I think it's commendable in the fact also that we've actually been getting that results for a little while now, for the most part, right? And this is probably more commentary to you and your staff, that for those listening, Mr. Dahl and his firm tonight are making their first presentation as new auditors for us. So, this is precisely why we switched auditing firms, is to get a different perspective and view, and to find the same findings, positive findings, is fantastic. So, thank you very much.
Good point. Yes, all right. Director Alt.
Yeah, I too appreciated the fresh set of eyes and just a different voice in the budget. It made me kind of stop and, you know, kind of think and ask some different questions, and just some of the suggestions that you made in the communication document in terms of what this board can do with the audit, you know, it just, it was really thoughtful and, and very helpful, and so, thank you for the thoughtful write-up, both in the communication letter and then the analysis, and I'd like to echo Director Miller's comment that, you know, your department continues to do a fantastic job. You know, we have that second acknowledgement of honor for your, for your department, and thank you all for, for your hard work and your diligence and your dedication, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. I don't have any specific questions either. I was going to say pretty much what those two did, so I'm not going to be redundant. I will just say thank you very much. Tyler, you and your department are doing a great job, so thank you very much to you as well. And I guess that is it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks again.
I appreciate you.
All right. Next, we will receive the World's Best Workforce Achievement and Integration Progress Report from Amina Aftedahl, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and Isis Buchanan, Director of Educational Equity.
Good evening, Director Hume, Assistant Superintendent Belmont, and members of the board. Thank you for giving me and Director Buchanan the opportunity to share our annual report for the 2022-23 school years, World's Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration Plans. This is a progress report that we provide to you each year as a retrospective of the prior year. This evening, we will provide an overview, we will provide an overview of the purpose and intent of both the Minnesota, the state of Minnesota's World's Best Workforce and the Achievement and Integration Programs. Next, we'll discuss the results of each goal for this past year, and finally, we'll have, take the chance to share the programming and strategies in place to address this year's This report combines the progress of two programs, the World's Best Workforce, the five key areas that demonstrate the path of a successful Minnesota student from kindergarten readiness to graduation and post-secondary success, and the Achievement and Integration, a state-funded program with the intent of pursuing racial and economic integration, student achievement, equitable opportunities, and reducing academic disparities. In some instances, the goals of the two programs intersect, and in others, the goals address separate elements unique to their purposes. This evening, we will be reviewing the results of year three of a three-year plan, knowing that the 2023-24 school year is year one of our newly approved plan from MDE for Achievement and Integration. First is kindergarten readiness. Incoming kindergarteners are assessed for their readiness for kindergarten in many domains, including early literacy, numeracy, their social skills, communication, self-regulation, and creative thinking. For the World's Best Workforce and the Achievement and Integration, only one of these domains is used, the pre-reading literacy skills. This fall, we again used an assessment of a composite of four measures of pre-reading called the Early Reading Assessment. The four measures were concepts of print, do students recognize how print represents words, and do they recognize print being upside-down, right-side-up, left-to-right? The beginning of word sounds, letter names and letter sounds. These are all important indicators of pre-reading skills. It is not the expectation that students come to kindergarten being readers, proficient readers, but instead that they have the background and of, that's necessary for foundational literacy development. Individually, the assessment is individually administered to each learner, and the composite provides a broader look at a young learner's readiness for literacy instruction. Last year, 46% of incoming kindergarteners met the benchmark for readiness, while this fall, 43% of learners met this benchmark. This did not show growth in numbers that, for these youngest learners, and did not achieve our goal of 50%. This year, using one of the, this year, we are using one of the foundational literacy curriculums at some of our VPK sites, so that, our hope is that by providing more directed pre-literacy background and skills for preschool students attending our district VPK programming, we'll see a continued increase in these numbers. When looking at the Achievement and Integration goals focused on specific demographic groups, there were some highlights. While overall percentages of our early BIPOC learners did not show growth, there were some gains with identified Native and Indigenous students, and small gains among our Latino and Hispanic students. From a broader perspective, there were gains in many student groups on this kindergarten readiness measure, but a decline in the pre-literacy skills among our Black and African-American kindergarteners, an area and a place for us to target in our VPK programs. The big picture does demonstrate a positive trend, however, over the three years. The next goal for World's Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration is for all students reaching reading at grade level by grade three. Research shows that this is a key benchmark for reading proficiency and academic performance to graduation. While the goal of 42% was not met, the incremental trend is to the positive. Many of our primary learners are experiencing intensive instruction around foundational literacy this year, with staff providing additional support in foundational skills for students in grades three through five to fill their foundational literacy gaps. The next graph shows the overall trend for grade-three readers by demographic groups, and it shows an encouraging, small but steady performance since the pandemic. So coming out of the pandemic, we're continuing to see a positive trend. Expanding the look at reading performance in grade three by special populations, there does continue to be sharp disparities among our multilingual learners and their non, their English-speaking counterparts, and our students being served with IEPs. As we look at reducing the performance disparities or differences between our BIPOC students and their white peers, there has been a loss in the reductions since 2019, with the difference harkening back to the 27.7%. There was a demonstration of progress in the reduction of the disparities along the socioeconomic lines, with students eligible for free and reduced meals making a significant gain at 19%, exceeding the goal of 20. Looking at the broader picture of MCA reading for all students in grades three through 10 shows ISD 191 students following a similar trend with the state, while lagging behind at proficiency levels. This is true for our racial and ethnic groups and our special populations. Turning now to college and career readiness, one of our key indicators is the ACT score. Looking at the four-year trend for ACT scores is one indicator, just one, of college and career readiness. There was very little change in the district average composite scores, which reflected the trains that are, the lack of change that has been seen statewide. Another indicator for us is our rigorous coursework enrollments. One area of growth for our district is to, for our Achievement and Integration Plan, is to decrease the disparity in representation in the enrollment of students of color and their white peers in rigorous high school courses. We define for this slide rigorous high school courses as courses that carry the opportunity to earn college credit. The disparity was reduced from 24% in 2020 to 14% in 2023. Last year, the enrollment disparity dropped to 13%, reflecting the work, our goal was 14% in 2023, it dropped to 13%. This is a reflection of the work that middle school and high school staff have done to prepare and engage our students in those college credit-bearing courses and making them accessible to all students. So, this was encouraging. Both the World's Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration goals focus on graduation rates. Graduation rates at Burnsville High School and statewide remain steady, as we see in this three-year trend, we saw a 1% decrease. This, and also to remember, this is a lagging indicator, this is the class of 2022. Burnsville Alternative High School lags behind in the four-year graduation rate by the very nature of the type of learners they serve, not only as an alternative setting, but as a significant source of credit recovery for students who enter there already behind for, on their way to graduation. They do also continue to struggle and to regain their ground in the five- and six-year graduation rates. When examining the four-year graduation rates of some BIPOC learners, you can see that our Black or African-American students experienced a loss from the previous year, yet continue to outperform the planned goal. Latino or Hispanic students in the class of 2022 did not meet the planned goal of 72% and posted a significant drop from 67% to 59%. This continues to reflect ongoing disparities with many of our Spanish-speaking students. And so, this slide, we're, this report that we're sharing with you with the World's Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration is a compilation of data from both of those programs, and reflecting on our past year, we use the information and the data that we reviewed to create programming for curriculum instruction and professional development as we move forward, and we look forward to using this year to complete the student performance and achievement, or the SPA reports that are scheduled. And so this year, the plan is that we will share information about our current plan going into the new year, and we're excited to share the information, and then there's a preview of some of the content that we'll review, and so there'll be a literacy update on January 25th, which, which focuses on those K2 foundational literacy curriculum implementation and preliminary results, and then there'll also be time where we'll share about-
And then there'll also be time where we'll share about the middle school reading intervention efforts. And March twenty-eighth, we'll focus on academic differences in reading and math, as well as discipline and responses to behavior. And we'll also share about our multilingual program and professional development and implementation based on our recommendations from last year's comprehensive program review. On April twenty-fifth, we'll focus on college and career readiness, where we'll share information about graduation and examining both preventative and support of our credit recovery programs, and then also looking again at those rigorous course enrollments. And then finally, June thirteenth, we'll have our Read Well and Local Literacy Plan shared, which will look at our first-year results for the K-two foundational literacy and the strategies for the READ Act implementation.
As we bring our presentation to a close, I just want to thank, uh, Director Buchanan for, uh, joining me this evening. This, uh, I'm excited to have her join us, uh, as a member of our staff, uh, simply because that creates a, a much greater partnership for us as we work on our, uh, equity work and how that impacts our World's Best Workforce work as well and our student achievement. And, um, I'm just, I just wanted to express, um, just how exciting it is to have that partner and, and, um, be able to move forward with a lot of these plans, uh, with that in mind. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, board members, are there questions or comments? Director Connor.
Yes, excuse me. Yes, thank you, Director Buchanan. I'm so glad that you're on the staff also. And I am really happy to hear about that our, um, students are, you know, going up slightly, meeting some goals, but I'm just wondering why, do you know why the BI-, uh, do you have any idea why BIPOC students are still kind of struggling and not meeting the expectations that I'd hoped they would be?
Sure. I think that's, uh, I think it's a great question. Uh, I think the answer is bigger than what we can answer at the table. However, I do have some insights, um, on a small scale. One of them would be that we, um, continue to, uh, put our efforts into making sure that our instruction is culturally responsive.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think that, um, many times, uh, especially for our BIPOC students, we're seeing, um, an increase in those numbers, uh, reflecting our, um, our multilingual learners. And I think some of the recommendations and the implementation that, uh, Director Buchanan is leading this, this, this year, um, we hope will begin to show some impact in that area. I think, um, we need to continue to dig deeper into what are some of the causes and the root causes for, uh, some of the declines for our African-American and Black students. Um, they continue, they, uh, showed a decline over this last year and, uh, making sure that we're, we're really focused on some of those preventative measures and early, kind of, early warning, early intervention kinds of pieces to, um, to ensure that we don't see any further decline and can continue on with that path of growth.
Are you seeing that discipline is showing a, a part in, it's interrupting their education? Or is it?
Um, I think, yeah.
A distraction?
I think that, uh, there continues, and I think our data, uh, that we'll be able to share with you during the March meeting can show some of the, um, dis-, uh, disparities in how our students of color are experiencing, um, our responses to behavior.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Director Hall.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for the report, both. And I always look forward to these reports. Um, they kind of, you know, get us thinking and also feeling our work a little bit more. Um, this may be a question that you don't have an answer to tonight, and that's perfectly fine. In terms of the kindergarten readiness, um, do you, I'm sure somewhere we know the percentage of our VPK students that are attending our kindergarten. You probably don't have that tonight.
I, I don't have that figure. I do know that, um, we do serve, um, almost six hundred students in our VPK program, and significant numbers of those students do join us at kindergarten. Um, I do think that, um, that is one of the strong data points that I want to be able to share with you at the literacy update in January, so that you can see the impact of some of our, uh, pre-KK alignment work, as well as, uh, some of the preliminary data on the sites that are, the VPK sites that are using the foundational literacy program.
So more to come. That's great. Um, and rigor, I heard you say, Amina, you know, a lot of that, you know, the, the, the decrease in the disparity, you know, the, um, or the more, it more inclusive nature of our rigorous courses is directly attributable, attributable to the work of our middle school teachers. Have we increased the number of rigorous classes as well, or are we pretty much staying the same? Like, it, are there more classes to access too?
Um, so I think the combined efforts, uh, during, uh, this last registration, in fact, we were just meeting with, uh, middle school and high school staff this morning, uh, reflecting on just the amazing partnership between our middle school and our high school during that registration process, really helping to direct students, um, into those. Uh, I, I do know that we have increased the number of courses, but that is more of a direct reflection of additional courses added for the, um, associate's degree.
Which could also be bigger.
Right, absolutely.
I mean, they're direct, if they're part of the associate's degree, I would imagine that's.
But as far as additional, uh, courses that are college credit-bearing, we haven't really, we've expanded, I think this year we added one.
Okay, great. Um, and I always have my eye on how our Latinx students are doing. They're always, we're always underserving them.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, very, very consistently, I just worry about, you know, and I know, you know, can you speak to that? What are, what else are we doing?
Um, you're absolutely correct. They, they do show up in our data as, as continuing to be underserved. Uh, I think that, uh, a lot of the work that, uh, Director Buchanan is doing with the multilingual folks, um, we're seeing the, a significant increase in the number of Spanish-speaking, uh, multilingual learners, um, and that, I think that begins to contribute to that. And hopefully, as we take very specific actions, um, with, uh, with that programming and, uh, the shared efficacy amongst all teachers with that, uh, particular program, we, uh, hope to, um, buck the trend that is very true in the state of Minnesota.
Each, each teacher owns e-, all students and each student.
Mm-hmm.
Right, yeah. Um, and looking at the list of reports, um, I don't know if this necessi-, and I know you already have the reports set, not looking to change them, um, attendance has got to be part of it. I know that it's a tough, it's, it's a tough data point to track because of the nature of the way attendance is tracked, but, um, if the students aren't in the classroom, you know, what are we doing? Um, you know, how are we, uh, you know, I personally would like to know, how are we tracking attendance, you know? It, how, how are we defining a tardy? How are we defining an absence at each of the levels? Um, how, how are our students doing with attending class? How is, how is attendance impacting their learning? Because all of this is well and good, but if they're not in class, they're not learning. And, and the professional development and, and all of that, we need to have our kids with their teachers.
Mm-hmm. Um, I believe with our dashboard reports, these SPA reports are part of that broader, um, report on the dashboard, and I believe attendance is one of those.
So we will be talking about that.
I believe, I believe it is on the dashboard reporting.
Mm-hmm.
It just doesn't fall under the.
The world's best.
Yeah, yep, no, I get it. The SPA, not part of the SPA.
So maybe, Chair Hume, we can make sure we do talk about attendance. I know I'm kind of a broken record with that, but.
What do you mean?
I do, I do.
You own it, though.
I, I completely do. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
And I do know that, that, that is part of, as we're doing our data work with, especially with our foundational literacy, is that, that is one of the pieces of data that stu-, that teachers and coordinators are looking at, is what is the impact for students who, uh, miss X number of lessons or, you know, some of those foundational lessons, so that it is being taken into account when we think about the efficacy of the, of the curriculum itself.
Well, and also, we talked at a previous meeting too about attendance, both in terms of, you know, staff and students, right? The two, there's an interplay between the two, so, you know, you can't have one without the other, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm done, I promise.
And also, the other thing we talked about before is during the pandemic, people were encouraged to take their, when they are sick, to take at sick time. So some changes in attendance patterns could also be attributed to people doing what we've told them to do, which is if you're sick, stay home. So it's definitely not an easy solve, for sure, but thank you for continuing to raise the concern. And thank you for doing what you can to address it. Um, any, anyone else have questions? I just had one that's kind of builds on one that Director Hall said. I hope I'm not being completely redundant, but, um, I was also curious about the kindergarten readiness of the students that attended preschool in the district, and if we have, I know, yes, we know the, uh, six hundred, I think you said.
Sure.
And a good percentage of them go to kindergarten in the district. What I'm especially curious about is how do those six hundred, we'll say, whatever the number is that actually goes to kindergarten in the district, how do they do compared to students who did not go to preschool in the district? And would that be a data point we would have? Because maybe that's a selling point for getting people to enroll their students in preschool. They're, and we always say there'd be more ready for kindergarten, but this would be data to back that up as well.
Yeah. And that, that, we have that data readily available and, um, will be really happy to show it.
Great.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Chair Hume, I was just gonna add, um, to, um, just appreciation to these two leaders to echo something that I heard, um, I think it was Director, it was one of the two directors, either OptaDoll or Buchanan, um, that both of these leaders and, um, and those they lead are, are really pushing to ask more questions about the data. So you all see kind of that broad, um, that data, that goal, and until we really get down to that individual student, um, Director Connor mentioned BIPOC, well, we definitely know through our tools of cultural proficiency that just that term, there's, there's different cultures within there, there's different success stories, there is cultures within cultures, and then there's those student stories. So just really getting into the sites, learning, finding out what's really working, um, the progress for our Indigenous, um, students, for example, being really curious and interested about that and finding out what's really working and trying to replicate that for our Spanish-speaking students. So I'm just grateful for that really trudgy, difficult work that should, should see those gains in the long term, so.
Thank you. All right, if there are no further questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Now we'll receive reports about board committees, appointments, and school assignments. We'll start with board committee reports. Is there a legislative committee report this month?
Uh, no, we did not meet this month.
Quick report. Um, policies, is there a policy committee report this month?
A brief one, yes. We met this past Tuesday, yeah. We met this past Tuesday very briefly, um, had only a few policies, they'll be coming forward, uh, and we meet again in November on Tuesday, November twenty-eighth at five o'clock in this room. Um, yeah, that ends my report.
Thank you very much. And Director Miller, is there a negotiations committee report?
There is a negotiations committee report. I'm happy to announce the negotiations committee is in swing, um, having meetings. Um, we have now had two, well, we, uh, some of our other units are, um, are reaching conclusion, um, and we have now had two meetings with, um, our largest bargaining unit, the BEA, uh, the last being last evening, actually. And, um, in both cases, we've had, um, very healthy conversations about topics of language, uh, and, um, I think they've been productive conversations. Uh, as most people know, most, uh, or should know, mo-, most of the proposals, language or contract negotiations are really about language, and to that effect, we want to remind everybody that in the interest of transparency and, um, good faith bargaining, uh, we've made sure that everything's available on the website, at the ISD one ninety-one website, um, under the quick links, both side-by-sides and, and what has been proposed. Um, I said most things are about language. Of course, there's an economic component to negotiations, um, and I do want to address something that, uh, there seems to be some misunderstanding going on. Um, the proposal that was brought forth by the BEA had a direct consideration or first opening negotiation for wage increases of eight and six, eight percent for the first year, six percent for the second year. And that's just the start of the conversation. Uh, it has always been the, the practice of the district to bring forward a package that is total, um, rather than initially addressing the, the salary increases as an independent unit. So we did that. Um, we've also been abundantly clear here in this, in, uh, negotiations at this table and, and with them, that, um, that the, uh, healthcare costs are unfortunately going to be rising considerably, and there's going to have some impact on that total package. In the interests of attempting to demonstrate the impact of those healthcare cost rises, we modeled in our original package, a scenario where if we removed wage-salary increases, it demonstrated what would be the overall benefit to, or the overall increase independent of wage for the, uh, for the, um, teachers. We were never intending for a implication that we were suggesting a zero-and-zero increase. It was simply a model that was presented, and we were, we thought we were abundantly clear about that in our messaging. Unfortunately, that was apparently misinterpreted as a zero-and-zero increase, and it's come to my knowledge, or our knowledge, that there are buttons floating around in the district now that say zero-and-zero on them, implying that we led with zero-and-zero. So I want to be very, very clear for anybody listening, for this group, this board has never given me the instruction to bring forward a zero-and-zero proposal. I, we did not bring forward a zero-and-zero proposal, and I was abundantly clear with them last evening that we don't intend for it to be a zero-and-zero proposal, and we would never do that. So, um, in the interest of transparency and good faith negotiations, I'd like to be very clear about that. So that ends the conversation from the negotiations committee. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Board members, are there any other committee or, um, school assignment reports this evening? Director Connor.
Yes, I have a very interesting, uh, report from a, a, oh, my AMSD, um, meeting, uh, that was the first Friday of the month, and it was, um, a panel of four students. They appeared to be, uh, students of, of color, uh, different races, and, um, they asked him four questions, well, maybe five, and I just want to share with you some of the interesting insight answers that these students gave. I was so impressed with them. So, um, bear with me for maybe three, four minutes while I just go over some of these questions. Oh, one of, two of the students were seniors, and I believe two were, uh, junior, I know one was, but as I was trying to write, I couldn't, you know, keep up with everything they were saying. So, but I believe two of them were juniors, and one was from Prior Lake, and I can't remember where all the rest of them were from. But they were from different districts, and so it was, uh, very interesting to hear all their insights, um, to these, uh, and answers to these questions. The first question they gave them was, what is, what do you feel is the purpose of education? Uh, one of the students said, what we expect is the purpose of education to be, is to prepare us for life after high school, and that's what we expect. We want to be prepared for life. The other one said, high school should be a testing ground for what life is after high school, and it should not just be, um, for, they should, they feel it should not just be something that they have to pay to figure out in college. I thought that was very insightful. So they said that we should learn about communication skills and job skills, and also prepare us for life and their interests, not just for college. So they want to be prepared for their interests, not just for college. That was very good. Second question, um, what should be the perfect high school experience? Uh, they said they like meeting all types of students, they mean all different cultures and learning about them and interacting with them. They said that they don't want to focus solely on grades, they want to also, um, exercise time management, they want to have that opportunity. Um, they said school should be set up to instill values instead of just formulas. Wow. Um, they also said they want more time for sharing thoughts, feelings, and learning different ways and not just memorizing tests. Uh, they also, the other question was, um, what day excited you about school? What, what was really something that excited you about school? One of the students said they saw a recycling business, they had a field trip, apparently, and they got to see behind the scenes. So they, he said that this was a really good experience for him, rather than just sitting in the classroom, and this helped him learn some business. business sense that he could take after school. So now he has an idea of what he wants to do after high school. Another student said that they had to do a thesis on something that interested them. And she said this essay assignment was so passionate for her, and that it really taught her opinions and learning and sharing with her classmates. They also asked them about what was a good experience, or what maybe have you had an experience since post, I mean, post pandemic in school. So what's some good experiences you've had since the pandemic is over? A lot of kids, I mean, not a lot. One of the students said they did not struggle so much with the pandemic. They said it gave them a chance to focus on their assignments. And, but they did miss the connection of students and teachers. They said it also taught them how to be flexible, and, but it was harder to focus. Another one said they really, it really affected their social relationships and student-teacher bond. Another one said school is better with online, with an online option of learning and how to use online tools that they're going to need in college. Schools should not be afraid to change the structure of school to benefit students, not adults. And then the last question, what do you think the goal of technology should be in school, was the question. One of the students said they like technology because it teaches research that you can't get out of books and, or just in the classroom. They said it also teaches more independence of learning for their future, because they can research more things, you know, online. And they also said that, yes, there are distractions with, with tech, but they said they like the independence of learning and the distractions don't outweigh the learning opportunities. And they also said technology is affecting, oh, one said technology is affecting mental health. And the last one, which I thought was very profound, said that they feel it's very beneficial because that's the way the world is going. And teens need to learn that they need to make decisions for themselves, and that, and that they need to learn the consequences for their decisions, because they won't be teenagers forever. I thought that was, they were so great. So that's my report.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Not I have two. Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Yep. So Intermediate District 917 had its board meeting on the first Tuesday of the month. We were, had a preliminary report about some of the historical hiring and retention of staff, as well as having a session to prepare for upcoming negotiations with their bargaining units. So bargaining season, I guess. But then on October 12th, they had their annual retreat with the superintendents and board members to come together. And it was a deeper dive with the challenges with hiring and retaining staff. And so, so the question is, it's in getting new staff to come in, is, are there potential other partnerships? Where do they try to look to recruit from? Of course, their biggest challenge is still paras, and similar to probably our district too, or no other district. And realizing that we, they lose some of their staff to our districts. And so, how do we partner, better partner together and have more, maybe hard conversations about, about that? And then, so does that mean in terms of retention, how do we shift potential, you know, working models? You know, is it our working model shift? You know, are there other benefits outside in addition to salary that would entice people to come to work in our area? You know, so is it, you know, something with techno, you know, like just very, like trying to think a little outside of the box. And so it was, it was interesting. I know there's more dialogue that needs to come, but it was a good start.
Good, good. All right, I have two updates. One is short. So I was, two weeks ago, it was the day after our last board meeting, I attended, I was invited to attend the Gideon Pond Building Leadership Team meeting. They are wanting to involve different stakeholders in their building leadership team meetings this year. So being a former Gideon Pond parent, I guess they decided to invite me. It was, it's always fun seeing a couple of my kids' former teachers there. And perhaps not surprisingly, given my long history as a Gideon Pond parent, I was, as always, extremely impressed with the dedication and the problem-solving spirit in the room that morning. There were some pretty big issues they are working through, and the commitment, and the dedication, and the brainstorming, and the ideas that they were coming up with. It was really, it was very powerful to be there and just see them in action in a different environment than I'd ever really seen. Some of them I've known for 15 years, almost 20 years in one case. And it was really good to see them in that, in that setting, and just watching them being so solution-focused is what I, is what one of my takeaways was, and what I told them at the end of the meeting. So really appreciated that. So that's my one update. And then my other update is, before we move on to the consent agenda, I do want to just share that tonight is ISD 191 Executive Assistant Extraordinaire Jamie Kenny's final board meeting with the district. Earlier this year, Dr. Battle nominated Jamie for the Minnesota Superintendent's Office Personnel Association Executive Assistant of the Year Award. That's a long name. I was asked to write an endorsement of Jamie as part of the nomination process, and in that application, I wrote the following. "I first joined the ISD 191 Board in January of 2019. Since I was elected, Jamie has been an invaluable asset and a critically important support for our school board and for Dr. Battle. She has years of experience, knows district policies and processes extremely well, and is someone each of us looks to when we have questions or need information about the appropriate way to handle certain items related to board work. She also provides outstanding and critical logistical support for our meetings, including inviting guests, ensuring all board members have accurate and updated background documents for our meetings, and informing us when there are changes in these documents. In addition to the above, Jamie never hesitates to answer a question or to help a board member or a staff member when needed. She's extremely reliable in the work she does to support the district and is very positive in her interactions with board members and with staff. In that same nomination process, Dr. Battle wrote that Jamie has been a longtime employee who brings her historical knowledge to ensure we have context for our decisions and to prevent us from making mistakes. She is a hub of support for other staff at our central offices. They rely on her for problem-solving and for information about district policies and procedures. She's open to new ideas and gives her energy and talent to create a welcoming workplace, as evidenced by her participation in our district office climate team that is responsible for creating welcoming, inclusive, and fun events to build collegiality among central office staff. Jamie has been an extraordinary asset to our school district. She's held an very high esteem, does amazing work, and is a great colleague. I think I can speak for all of my board colleagues when I say that Jamie, you will be missed. I wish you nothing but the best as you move on to your next chapter. And I will just ask board members, if any of you have anything you would like to say. Director Miller?
Ditto. That was, that was quite extensive, Scott, although you cheated and just pulled something out of the cabinet, so that's good.
Well, when it's already pre-written for, when I had already written it once before.
Jamie, you have been fantastic at your role here. Every organization, everybody does work there. You are one of the few people in an organization that make things work. And so thank you very much for everything you have done for this organization, and specifically selfishly for us. So, thank you.
Director Connor?
You know how I feel about you. I've already said everything I wanted to say to you in my email to you, so I won't repeat it. But yes, extraordinary job. I, I just, I don't know, you've got some big shoes to fill. That's all I know. We're going to miss you.
No, thank you so much for, I mean, such an asset for our district. I know, coming on at the same time, Scott came on, like, the guidance that you even coach, you know, like you coach us as board members a little bit too, or put, put little seeds in our brains of maybe doing things. Like, like, I didn't even think of serving as chair if you didn't plant that seed. And I appreciate that. And appreciate, I mean, eyes dotted, teeth crossed. I mean, I don't know anybody who's as organized as you are to the nth detail. And scripting helped us so, so that we looked smart at the board table during meetings.
People are going to notice a big difference in my, in my speaking at the next board meeting.
So I totally appreciate you. I'm going to miss seeing you here.
I can watch you.
I'm sure it's exactly how you'd be spending your Thursday nights.
What are they up to?
Director Alt?
So you started just shortly before I did. And I never would have guessed, I never ever would have guessed, because you were there and you knew exactly how to welcome me. You, as everybody has said, you just, you had, you had the keys to the castle. You, you knew how to help us. It didn't matter what season it was, you know, policy, election season, whatever it was that, that needed to be done, the hours that you put in, the snowstorms that, the, the, the snowstorms that you braved home, that you, you know, you stayed here, you know, it just, you've been so dedicated to this district, to, you know, the team, to this board. And thank you. You just, you have worked so tirelessly and with such a great outlook, such a kind-hearted person. And, you know, I mean, I remember making an offhanded comment about a gavel, and it showed up. And it's still here. And it's still here. And I just, you know, I, you have just, you, you, you have kept us organized and just smooth sailing. And I know that wherever you go, you know, I'm glad you're going to get work-life balance. I know you and I have talked about that, and I'm so glad for you. We are going to miss you terribly. And I know wherever you go, you're going to do awesome things. And hopefully that work-life balance is going to, you know, give you a little, a little, you know, more time at home and some, some peace of mind. And, you know, I, you're going to do great at work, wherever you go, and don't be a stranger.
You're welcome to watch us online or in person anytime you want. So as a board, we pitched in and got a little something for you, so.
It's been an honor to serve this board and this school district, and I will miss you dearly.
We wish you all the best in your next adventure. Thank you, Jamie. All right, let's all take a.
Is it too late for a school assignment? Because I didn't know that was going to be included in this meeting.
Oh, if you want to do a.
Should I just do it in?
Can just do it next time.
Yes, yes, I'd rather do it next time.
All right. Breaks the mood.
Yes, right.
All right, so let's all take a deep breath. And now, now we'll move on to the business portion of the board meeting, starting with the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Miller.
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Tonight, we are being asked to authorize Superintendent Battle to sign the Joint Powers Agreement between Dakota County and ISD 191 for inter-agency early intervention services. The recommendation is being presented by Amy Pietrowski, Director of Student Support Services.
Yes. Good evening. Yes, good evening, Director Hume, members of the board, and, well, Dr. Belmont. I'm used to saying Dr. Battle. I am here this evening to bring forward the joint powers agreement between the Dakota County and their early intervention services in the district. The purpose of the agreement is to set forth the respective duties and responsibilities of the county and the school district as a provision of the inter-agency early intervention services by the county and the school district. So the recommendation I bring forward is that the board authorize Superintendent Dr. Battle to sign the joint powers agreement between Dakota County and District 191 inter-agency early intervention services.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Miller.
Second.
Seconded by Director Alt. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next, we are being asked to approve the signing of the Joint Powers Agreement between Dakota County and the cities, townships, and school districts in Dakota County for the provision of absentee voting administration services. Stacy Silvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services, is presenting the recommendation. Welcome, Stacy.
Good evening, Chair Hume, Dr. Battle, members of the board. Dr. Battle, I did it. He said it, and I turned around and did it. And then I thought, Belmont.
I would have been shocked if it didn't happen at least once tonight.
Sorry about that, Chris.
It's okay. We look exactly the same.
Bringing to you, bringing to you tonight, the recommendation for the joint powers between Dakota County and Burnsville Schools. This is related to absentee voting. I won't go into all the background information, but in addition to the increase in the sharing of some of the cost, the county, election partners, and the voters of Dakota County will benefit from establishing consistency in absentee responsibilities, centralizing absentee mailing administration, and strengthening relationships between Dakota County cities, townships, and school district partners. Uniform delivery of absentee voting services across all jurisdictions enhances voter experience and trust. Additionally, election night reporting will be streamlined, as all absentee ballots will be in the possession of the county when polls close. So with that, it is my recommendation that the Board of Education approves the signing of the joint powers agreement between Dakota County and the cities, townships, and school districts in Dakota County for the provisions of absentee voting administration services.
Thank you, Stacy. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester.
Second.
Seconded by Director Miller. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the motion carries unanimously. The next item on our agenda is to prove, approve the proposed revisions and re-adopt the unchanged language in the 2023-2025 Master Agreement with Service Employees International Union Local 284 Custodial Employees, presented by Stacy Silvine.
Okay. This is our first settlement with one of our bargaining units this year. For our district, all bargaining units expire at the same time. So as of June 30th of 2023, all of our contracts have expired, and we have entered into negotiations. Custodians were the first. We're currently involved with Food Service and the BEA, as Director Miller had already mentioned. We met with the custodians three times, Tyler, Haley Bussker, and myself. Major language items that we reached tentative agreements on included some parallel legislative changes as far as representation, made some small changes to the emergency closing language, added Juneteenth as a holiday in the contract, added coverage language for temporary assignments. Also are putting into the contract language around a sick-and-safetime, which goes into effect January 1st, 2024. And also our modified bereavement language, as we are trying to stream that across the district. Every employee should have the same experience and, and understanding if, and when they have to go through that type of a situation. The total increase for two years is just a little over $500,000. There was an increase to the 40B contribution of $1,000, or up to $1,000. The two-year package under the MSA, MSBA model is 7.7%. And the settlement does fall within board parameters. So it is my recommendation that the Board of Education approve the proposed visions and re-adopt the unchanged language in the 2023-2025 Master Agreement with Service Employees International Union Local 284 Custodial Employees.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt. I think I, I think I heard Leslie first. Moved seconded by Director Chester. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next, we are being asked to approve on a first reading basis, changes to Policy 509, enrollment of non-resident students, 534, school mills, Policy 708, transportation of non-public school students, 709, student transportation safety policy, and 806, crisis management policy. management policy. This recommendation is being presented by Stacy Silvine.
Again, thank you, Chair Hume. These policies were reviewed by the Policy Review Committee on September 26, 2023. All of them were updated with MSBA recommendations. Many of those recommendations were aligned with new legislation. So they're just updating along those lines. We're just bringing to you on the, all of these policies for a first reading basis, let me just move into the recommendation, to approve on a first reading basis, changes to Policies 509, enrollment of non-resident students, 534, school meals policy, 708, transportation of non-public school students, 709, student transportation safety policy, and 806, crisis management policy.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Miller. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. The final new business item we are being asked to approve this evening on a first reading basis, changes to Policy 419, tobacco-free environment, 516.5, overdose medication, and 532, use of peace officers and crisis teams. The recommendation is being presented by Amy Pietrowski, Director of Student Support Services. Welcome again.
Yeah, welcome. Well, thank you. Yeah, so I'm bringing forth the policies that were reviewed by the policy committee on September 26, 2023. The summary of them is they, in 419, it just addresses the loose tobacco tribal rituals. 516.5 added some school district policy requirements and prescription authorizations. And the 532 added the reasonable force provision to our policy. So I, my recommendation is that we approve on a first reading basis, the changes to Policies 419, tobacco-free environment, 516.5, overdose medication, and 532, use of peace officers and a crime, or crisis teams. We don't have any of those. Okay.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Director Alt. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Seeing no other business items, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Director Miller.
Second.
Seconded by Director Connor. If I vote against it, does that mean Jamie has to stay? Where's that in Robert's rules? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously and we are adjourning at 7:43. Thank you very much. Have a good evening, everyone.
Gavel to Jamie.